All right, good afternoon. Welcome to this afternoon's Planning Commission meeting. We'll get started in just a moment. Before we do, a brief overview of how we'll handle each case. We'll have Elizabeth present cases to us in order. We'll have an opportunity to ask her questions before we invite the applicant up to provide any other details they want to share with us. Then we will hold public hearings and the public is welcome to come up and share up to three minutes' worth of comments relevant to that case before we then invite the applicant back up to address any concerns that were raised during the public hearing, and then we deliberate make a decision and move on to our next case. Before we get started with our first case, let's go over conflicts of interest for today's meeting.
Chairman, my husband Derek is the chairperson, the president for the Wellhouse Board, which is the Pleasant Street case before us today, is without compensation.
Okay, discussion on that?
I think because there's no financial gain for Commissioner Wallace's family, I would move that she does not have a conflict.
Okay, any other input?
I agree.
Is that support?
Support.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I'll mention two conflicts. Our last case today is a business that I am co-owner of, so I do have a financial interest. I wouldn't say financial gain, but there's an interest. So we'll start with that one.
I would make a motion that you do have a conflict of interest.
I'd support that.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And then I'll just mention the case before it is very similar in many ways, and so I'm more comfortable recusing myself from that case as well. The 634 Wealthy. Sorry, what was that? Who made the motion? Okay.
Support.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that motion passes. Okay, let's get started with 960 and 1004 Diamond Ave Northeast.
This is a continuation of a case that was originally considered, I forgot the date here, but it was opened and we realized that I should have noticed it differently than I did, and so we re-noticed it, and the applicant now has some additional desires in his plan, his development plan, and is asking that the matter be tabled or postponed to March 10th. That will allow for staff to review the recently submitted plans, notice the project, and also allow for additional public engagement. And I do have the applicant here to say a few words as well about if you have any questions about that.
Yeah, anything you want to add, or commissioners, any questions about that? I think it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, that's pretty much what, I just wanted to make sure that the Planning Commission was aware because of the late notice of the request to revise the amended plan. So we look forward to just working over the next month to make sure you get what you need, and just wanted to make sure you got that beforehand. So that's why I'm here.
All right, thanks. Go ahead, Laurel. Do you have a question? No? Okay. I'm gonna open the public hearing, just in case anyone came about this case. You can get your comments on the record. So this is for 960 and 1004 Diamond Ave Northeast. Please come forward, state your name, and share your thoughts.
Sorry, I was late. I don't know what just transpired before I got here. My name's Todd Bronkema. I own the property at 952 Diamond. It's the property that's directly to the south and borders this property. Couple of the concerns I had from going forward from the last meeting too, was that, first of all, has this property been surveyed? There's no survey stakes out there, so I don't know if we know exactly where the lot lines and stuff are. And so that's given me a hard time telling, figuring out. The tree line on the south side, I believe the trees actually are on 952 Diamond's property, and I'm concerned that with them putting in a footing and sewer and water in that seven foot between the two lines, that it's going to end up killing the trees that are there. So then what problem, whose problem is that? Is that was one of a large concern of mine. Also, since there is a five-foot change between the two, I don't know if there's got to be a retaining wall built, because it's, you're putting a house five foot up, that's, you know, since the houses are so close together, what's going to hold all this, if the trees aren't there no more, which is the natural holding that hill, what's going to hold the hill between them? I sent a letter this morning that has a picture on it that has that. That's one of my biggest concerns about, you know, if something goes forward on this property, which I believe something has to go forward on this property. I looked into buying the property. I found it cost prohibitive to do what I wanted to do. And I'm glad somebody is doing something. I just, at this point, I think three buildings on that property does not fit the scheme of the neighborhood at all. So that concerns me, and also the amount of water that could be coming, and I don't know where all the water is going to go. Right now, there's a big collection area in the back of this property that then turns around and goes down through, down to Carrier Creek, through one of the person's yards and stuff like that. So I don't, if you're going to fill that whole area in for a parking lot, I'm concerned about, where's the water? Water runs downhill, finds gravity, that's what its job is to do. And I'm kind of worried about how much water is going to transfer on to my property. So, yeah, I am not opposed to, on this instance, I think the buildings, like I thought before, looked like they were three-unit buildings. I have absolutely no problem with two of them on there. I think that's space, you know, I think that that would be, fit the neighborhood better. Packing three buildings on there with not a lot of green space, especially and then all the trees on that south are going to have to be, they're going to have to go one way or the other.
Thank you.
Whether they're on my property or not.
Time's up, thank you.
You bet. Thank you.
Anyone else on this case? All right, I'll close the public hearing, turn to commissioners for a potential motion to postpone.
I'll make a motion to postpone till March 10th, so staff has time to work with the applicant on the plans and make sure they're set to go and notice correctly for the next go-around.
Support.
Okay, we have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Thank you. All right, our next case is 526 Maynard Ave Northwest, and we'll give Elizabeth a moment to get this set up.
So Magnus Capital Partners is requesting some minor deviations to an approved site plan for a multiple-family development near the intersection of Lake Michigan Drive and Maynard Avenue. I think most of you on the Planning Commission have seen this, but there may be a few of you that haven't. So this overall property is a planned redevelopment district, and it did go to both the Planning Commission and then the City Commission for a major amendment to allow this development. And that was, let's see, that was approved in July of 2020. And then in January of 2021, the applicant came forward with final site plan review for the development. The applicant is now asking for some changes to what was previously approved. So, let's see here, I'll move it forward a little bit here. This is the plan that was approved by the Planning Commission under final site plan review in January of 2021. The applicant is now requesting several changes, which they have kindly outlined in a narrative, which I need to find here. So the colored parts of the plan are what was the original plan. The black and white underlying plan is what's currently proposed. And I asked the applicant to show both on the same plan, so we can talk about all the different changes. So I'll give an overview, but the applicant's going to be able to talk about this in much better detail than me. And I'll defer to them to talk about why they're requesting these changes. So the first item is the North Entry Drive. And originally, it was in the location shown as red. They're now proposing to move it further north. In this case, our traffic engineers have no issue with that relocation. That's been reviewed, and that meets their requirements. A couple of things that staff thinks you might want to keep in mind are how this driveway might impact the properties across the street. And we do think that if possible, we'd like to see, I'm sorry, I should be pointing here, this revision, how it affects the properties across the street. And we do think it could be moved down just a little bit, so that traffic exiting, the headlights would shine sort of right between the two driveways, between the two properties. And we did talk to the, I haven't even mentioned this to the applicant, but our stormwater engineer said that that's a really minor change, and some modifications should be able to be made to the stormwater detention basin without any problem. So as a result of that, moving the driveway north, this detention bond at the front has been resized and, you know, reshaped. I did confirm with our stormwater engineer that the pond can't be any closer to the building than 50 feet. So if we do want the pond to get wider or move back, you know, the entire development would have to move back. The applicant has also provided additional amenities to Building 1, so they're proposing some sidewalks and a totlot, and that's, you know, in front of the building here. They're also proposing some courtyard amenities. There are four buildings in the center, and the applicant is proposing to move the dog park that was in the back of the development to the courtyard along with a plaza. The applicant is also proposing common balconies on Buildings 2 through 7, and those are the orange boxes that you see here. And I can show you how that affects the buildings by showing you Buildings 6 and 7. This is the original elevation of those buildings, and this is the proposed. So you can see, here are the common balconies. So it's not a terribly significant change, but it is a change, and because that affects the outdoors, we wanted to bring that to your attention. There is also, in addition, a maintenance building being proposed at the rear of the property. The trash enclosure is being proposed to move. Originally, it was where I'm showing you on the slide. It's being proposed to be pushed to the corner of the parking lot. This is the, this does abut the rear of the adjacent residential property, so it's possible that it may not have a huge impact. However, staff would prefer that the trash enclosure be as far as possible from those adjacent residential uses. I'm not sure that, you know, that the previous location is the very best location, but I would encourage the Planning Commission to consider whether this location is appropriate or not. Additionally, the applicant is proposing additional parking. And the, well, I should mention that, first of all, the building, this north-south oriented building, is now being proposed to go east-west, and additional parking is proposed there. And that additional parking was added at the behest of MISHDA. They wanted to see additional parking, and so the applicant has provided that. And I'll defer to them to give you additional details on that. And then there's, I forgot what building number that is, but this building at the southeast corner, the orientation has changed. And in addition, the ends of the buildings were two stories, and to provide additional amenity spaces in the main building at the front of the site, the applicant is proposing filling in some of those spaces. So you can see how originally, we had two stories at both ends, and now the applicant is proposing three stories at one of the ends of two buildings. So, and I'll defer to them to, you know, explore that further with you. One last item that I'd like to mention is the rear of the property. This is not indicated on the applicant's list of changes, but a large berm, I am blanking out on the exact height, but it's significant, 12 to 14 feet. Previously, the area at the rear of the property was intended to be kind of a natural grass with, you know, with some landscaping, but mostly kept natural with, I think, I don't remember if it was a wildflower mix, but some kind of, oh, prairie mix is what it was called. And then the adjacent portion near the buildings was to be, you know, typical lawn. Now, a significant berm is being proposed in that area. So that might be something the Planning Commission might also wish to discuss. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions or refer to the applicant at this time.
All right, thanks, Elizabeth. Commissioners, any questions?
Elizabeth, can you just remind us of the dumpster enclosure requirements?
Trash enclosures, they do need to be made of masonry, and that's something that the applicant will be doing. The zoning ordinance does say 20 feet from the residential property, and it will be at least 20 feet, let's see, I'll zoom in here, yep, because this is a 20-foot setback. So it is, you know, this is 25, you know, so it's at least, you know, 30 feet, if not more, from the lot line.
How tall would the enclosure be?
How tall? Usually, they're six to eight feet in height. I think the applicant will be able to tell us a little more on that.
Any other questions for Elizabeth? All right, thank you. I'll have the applicant up if there's other details you want to share with us.
I'll be happy to advance, or you can advance the slides.
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. Eric Mauring from Hooker &amp; Young Architects Engineers. Just to add a little bit to a few of these, the first one with the entry-drive relocation, this really came about due to some existing storm utilities that are in Maynard, or what we thought was in Maynard. And it's actually, I think, what we discussed early on with engineering, with our assumptions, we had our basin up front here, and we found out what is actually, what was actually constructed in Maynard was not adequate. So we are proposing to make some improvements to the storm system in Maynard, but due to the size of that, we needed to increase the size of our storm basin. So that's partly why our basin got a little bit larger, and why we needed to relocate that drive up there. And then, yeah, like Elizabeth said, with the parking, MISHDA did come back, and, you know, their requirement is two to one, two spaces per unit. We were approved at 1.6 spaces per unit. This, we've kind of discussed it with MISHDA, and I think we're at 1.75. So we're kind of in the middle ground between what MISHDA requires and kind of what we want to provide. And then, and that's why we had to rotate that building down there to sneak that parking. I think one of the comments from MISHDA that I think helps us is that we have a lot of two- and three-bedroom units on the east side of the site, so getting a little bit more parking over there, I think, will help, you know, with those units that will probably have more cars than the ones and twos that we have in Building 1. And then the dumpster, that was not a requirement, that was a suggestion from city engineering, because we do have a water line easement that's running in that drive. So that dumpster enclosure was kind of cutting into that easement, so we picked kind of another spot over there that is outside of that easement, and hopefully still far enough away from those neighbors. And then this building down here where we added two units, we did pick kind of this spot here, figuring, you know, that's the least, you know, I know we were trying to be respectful of the neighbors, and we left the building, Building 7 up here as is by the single-family, and then we did keep that two-story piece, you know, to the east for the multifamily development that's over there. We do have, I did note here, as far as this area over here, we do have the same amount of landscaping that we have, that we had approved before. The berm is due to, we do have some bad soils on site. There's arsenic on the site due to that being an orchard. So the berm is a little bit a way that we can, you know, distribute some of those soils on site and not have to take them off-site. So that's part of the reason for that berm. You know, we are only kind of using that back area for that as well. And I think it will provide a little bit of, you know, we have landscaping on there, it will provide a little bit of a screening from the development to the east as well. All of the landscaping on the north side remains the same, including what we had proposed over here at the drive. I think it was noted, there's existing trees over here in the corner, but after our survey, really nothing was able to be kept. So we do have the same landscape buffer to the north side as we did before. I think that covers it.
All right, thanks. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, how tall is that berm?
I don't know if this, did you get the full civil package in here, Elizabeth?
I'll figure it out.
Okay.
Okay.
And then Elizabeth mentioned moving the driveway slightly to the south to avoid direct headlights into the neighbors. Are you willing to consider that?
Yeah.
All right, I think that's all I have for now.
Yeah, I think, I mean, here's the grading plan. I think, like Elizabeth said, it's probably 14, 16 feet tall.
What is the, what's the level of arsenic in those soils?
I don't know, I don't know the exact amount. I know that, you know, our proposal, this being a MISHDA project, we do have to properly bury it, like it can't just get pushed onto the side of the site. There does need to be a certain level of, I guess, clean soils that go over top of that. So we would plan to follow whatever regulations needed for properly disposal.
Is this a Part 201, or was it not that level?
I am not, I'm not certain of that. I am not, I'm not certain of that.
Okay. Okay. And then I do, the stormwater, is that a retention or detention? Does it hold water or?
Know that it'll hold water or not? Yeah, I guess I'm not certain of that. But we did include, I think the last recommendation was to put like a stormwater seed mix in there. So that, I don't think it's, I don't think it's meant to be hold water all the time.
Okay.
But we do have, knowing that it's in the front of the site, we did, we do have a, like a seed mixture proposed for that.
Okay.
So it's not just a big ditch.
Okay. All right. Good.
And I think there's still landscaping proposed. Yeah, so we were replacing all of the trees along Maynard. It's pretty heavily landscaped now, but again, with the new sidewalk and everything, we determined that we couldn't keep those. So we do have landscaping proposed all along Maynard. And then, yeah, it's stormwater seed mix.
It's a detention basin.
Is it?
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anything around that or the tat lot that's proposed to be quite near it? Like how deep? I guess I, maybe I'm not, maybe it's not an issue. It's not deep or something, but I don't know, it just came to mind, the potential safety issue there with.
We do have a fence around it.
Okay.
Yeah, we were required to put a fence around it. Yeah.
Any other questions at this time? Okay. Thanks. I'll open up the public hearing. If you're here today about this amendment on Maynard, please come forward, state your name and share your thoughts. All right. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any discussion or additional questions?
I guess I just generally speaking wonder about the trash enclosure with regard to residential spaces. What is the staff recommendation specifically for that?
Go ahead, Elizabeth. Did you have?
I have two comments. The berm from the highest point to the lowest point is 15 feet. Okay? So, you know, some parts are a little bit less than that and some parts are, might even be greater, but that's, that's a pretty good estimate. The, the trash enclosure, I don't know why this particular location was, was chosen, but maybe the trash enclosure could go where I'm showing here where this tree is. And that would be, you know, fairly far from any of the existing single-family homes and as well as the other, the internal residential buildings. So that might be an option.
I think that certainly makes it less likely that it would be disturbing for the neighboring residents, but it looks like there's a number of enclosures that are kind of spread out and that does put two relatively close together without one towards that northeast edge. So I don't know if that makes sense or not. It's, it's not much closer to the residence than the one west of the proposed location, kind of central. I don't know how it will be used. Is it the residence? Can you, can you come up and, is it the residence responsibility to bring their trash to the enclosure or is a manager or some facilities person bringing?
Yeah, so buildings two through six in the back here, these were all, there's no trash rooms or anything. So these are, these will be residents bringing the trash. Buildings, building one, we do have a trash chute and a compactor, so maintenance will deal with, with the trash in building one. And that's, we have a dumpster that's right here for that.
For me, as long as it meets our ordinance, I can be okay with it.
I was gonna say, if the, the planning commission was uncomfortable with that location, we could require some additional evergreen screening on the north side of that enclosure to try to mitigate further. I think I would prefer that.
We'd be open to that, yeah.
Other discussion on the proposed changes?
I think that overall the plan, you know, with the tweaking in that is, is actually improved upon. I like the courtyard area adding to more, to the green space as well. So I'm over, I'm supportive of the applicant.
Yeah, I, I agree generally. I, I appreciate that even though they added back the third story on part of buildings six and seven, that they kept the step down toward the other property lines. So I think that's appropriate and, and some of these other amenities, I think, are, are good additions to the plan as well. I would have, I, yeah, I guess I would be interested to hear what others think about the berm situation. I had hoped potentially that this plan had some additional, like plantings toward the east side, but based on testimony, it seems like this is the same landscaping otherwise that, that we approved, so.
Yeah, I feel like the berm could be of benefit for additional screening. So while it might seem strange to have this large 15-foot random berm back there, I do think if I was living in the adjacent property to the east, that could be a benefit. So I'm, yeah, I think there's great improvements in this proposed change and including, including the berm, especially if the applicant's willing to slightly relocate the north drive to prevent lights and the additional evergreen around the north side of the new proposed trash enclosure. I'm supportive of it.
Can you remind us of what is on the other side of the berm? Is that residential as well?
Yeah, single-family is to the north and there is a, I don't know if it's senior apartments or there's an apartment complex.
Okay.
To the east side.
Okay.
You got it. Yeah, you can see here.
Oh, that's right. I remember that.
Yeah. So, yeah, there's right now, I think, I think during the first approval, you know, they were concerned about the tree line, but you can see the tree line is pretty far back here. So right now, this is pretty much open. So, yeah, we would be adding trees and that berm to, to kind of provide that buffer.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Did you have to do additional stormwater mitigation for that berm?
I don't think for the berm, it was more for that existing line that was in Maynard.
Okay. Our stormwater engineer would evaluate that as part of his review permit process.
Okay.
Yeah, we've started that process. That's why some of these changes are coming up after reviews with, with city staff too.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Beeler's comments remind me of, that lots of testimony that we've had in the past when developers have proposed taking down berms.
Right.
So, yeah, that's a good point. Thank you.
I'm happy to make a motion if there are no other comments. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning commission approves the request of Magus Capital Partners' Vishal Aurora for minor deviations to the approved development plan for a 240 dwelling unit multifamily development at 526 Maynard Avenue Northwest for the following reasons. The proposed development will meet the proposed, the purpose and intent of the master plan and zoning ordinance because the revised plan will reinforce and support the desired character for this area with the proposed use, site design and building elements. The site is designed to comply with all of the provisions of the zoning ordinance because adequate buffering between uses is proposed. Landscaping, transparency and exterior finishes comply with the ordinance. The proposed site will be developed so as not to impede the normal and orderly development or improvement of surrounding property for uses permitted by this chapter because the proposed buildings will be scaled, masked, oriented, sited and architecturally designed in a manner consistent, consistent and sensitive to other development in the vicinity. All elements of the site design are harmoniously and efficiently organized in relation to topography, the size and type of lot, character of the neighborhood and adjoining property and the type, size and proportions of buildings because the buildings will be sited with adequate setbacks from the adjacent low-density residential uses and building heights are intended to be sensitive to adjacent uses. All buildings or groups of buildings are arranged so as to permit access for emergency vehicles by practicable means. Outdoor lighting is designed so that it is deflected away from adjacent properties and does not impede the vision of drivers on public streets adversely affect abutting properties or necessarily affect the natural evening sky because being new construction, the development will be required to meet current zoning requirements. Natural features and site topography are incorporated into the proposed site design to maximize extent, to the maximum extent practical because the proposed development will meet the required green space and tree canopy requirements. Buildings and structures are placed in a manner that preserves and protects environmentally sensitive areas because the natural features and site topography are incorporated into the proposed site design to the maximum extent practical. Landscape buffers or green belts are provided that ensure that proposed uses are adequately buffered from one another and from surrounding public and private property because a significant landscape buffer is proposed between the development and the adjacent low-density development to the north. Stormwater management measures will be employed to satisfy ordinances related to water quality because as proposed, the stormwater detention facilities are anticipated to meet all design requirements. Driveways are located to minimize conflict with traffic operations on abutting streets and the number of driveways is the minimum needed to provide reasonable access to the site because there are two driveways proposed, one on either side of the site, and the northerly driveway is located as far away as possible from the adjacent low-density development. Off-site parking and loading areas are provided with particular attention to the effects of noise, glare and odor on adjacent properties in the proposed development because adequate parking will be provided on-site and parking lots will be adequately screened and are located as far as possible from nearby low-density uses. Safe, convenient and well-defined vehicular, bicycle and pedestrian circulation within and to and from the site will be provided because the driveways, streets and other elements are designed to promote safe and efficient movement within the site and its access points. The scale and design of the proposed development will place, will not place an excessive burden on the services currently furnished by the city because the new water, sanitary and traffic infrastructure will be provided by the developer. Be it further resolved that the following conditions of approval shall apply to this project. One, that the application and plans submitted by the applicant and signed, dated and stamped by the planning director shall constitute the approved plans except if plan elements do not meet ordinance requirements and/or as amended in this resolution. Two, that the land use development services or LUDS permit, building permit and all other required permits be obtained from the city of Grand Rapids prior to construction, demolition or operation. Three, that the proposed use will comply with all other applicable city ordinances and policies and all state laws. Four, this approval shall take effect after the date of the planning commission's decision. Five, that the north entrance to the development shall be placed sufficient to avoid direct headlight exposure to the properties on the west side of Maynard. And six, that additional evergreen screening north of the proposed trash enclosure on the northeast side of the development will be required.
Support.
All right. We have a motion in support. We have discussion. Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. The motion passes. Thank you. Our next case is 3150 Plainfield Ave., Northeast.
The applicant is requesting approval to construct a drive-through coffee kiosk within the parking lot of an existing shopping center. The property is zoned M-O-N-C, modern-era neighborhood commercial and in this zone district as well as everywhere else, drive-through facilities require planning commission special land use approval. Everyone is probably familiar with this shopping center at the north end of Plainfield, at the, at the edge of the city limits, just north of I-96. There are a number of commercial uses in the shopping center and there is a large common parking lot, as you can see in this photo. The property is zoned C, commercial, and as are the other properties on the corridor. There is residential and office to the east, but it's not really affected by anything that would happen at the front of this development since they abut the, the rear of the property. Additionally, there's MDOT right-of-way across the street of the property along with a hotel. The property is regularly shaped and it's about six acres. It has quite a long frontage along Plainfield. It's about 575 feet in, in length and it has varying depths of approximately 190 feet and up to 540 feet. There are two vehicular access points. I think I'll go back to the aerial here. One is directly across the street from the expressway exit ramp. And that, and there is, that is signal controlled there. And then on the south side, there is another vehicular access. There's another one on the north side, far north side of the property, but that doesn't lead to this parking lot. There are approximately 316 parking spaces here. So the applicant is proposing a drive-through coffee kiosk. It's, it would be a standalone building. The building would be approximately 664 square feet on a development area of about 15,000 square feet. The development area is intended to be leased rather than sold, so a new lot isn't going to be created. It's, it's a leased area. And traffic will have rights for access, cross-access across this, the larger property. About 40 of the existing parking spaces in the lot will be removed to facilitate the project, leaving 278 parking spaces. Now, this is a rather unique concept for the city of Grand Rapids. I know plenty of other places, maybe even in the metro region, but definitely across the country, do have this type of development. This is a drive-through only kiosk. There is no sit-down area. Let's see, I'll go to the floor plan. There, I'm not sure this is really showing us much, but there's, there's no area for, for patrons to come in and order a cup of coffee or, or sit down. It's drive-through only and there's also no access for pedestrians to, to walk up. So you really do need to drive through in, in a vehicle to patronize this establishment. Vehicles are intended to drive in and stack at the backside of the site. I think there's about eight stacking spaces there and sort of at the, I don't know, north, northeast corner of the building is where the pickup window will be, where, near where this first car is, of course. And then vehicles can go, you know, they could park in the parking lot or they could exit the facility, exit the parking lot itself, back out to Plainfield. I did talk to our traffic engineers in Mobile GR about this and they looked at the, the information provided by the applicant for the, the trip data is what, really what I was looking for. They were looking at the trip data and they did find this, the They were looking at the trip data, and they did find this stacking to be adequate here, but also noted that should additional stacking area be needed, the parking lot can definitely accommodate it. It's a large parking lot, and additional stacking could be available, you know, in front of this site without impeding access to any other businesses. There are a number of parking spaces along the front of the development here, and, you know, these are the furthest from any of the stores, and these are not highly utilized parking spaces. So it wouldn't impede any of that, any other vehicular access or need for parking. While I'm talking about traffic circulation, I should also mention pedestrian circulation because there are no facilities for members of the public to access this building. No pedestrian markings or facilities are being proposed here. We would generally require that for any kind of drive-through, but given this design, if you find it to be appropriate, there really was little need for that. Employees would typically park on these spaces either, you know, north, I don't know what direction that is, northwest of the development along Plainfield there, or on the site. There are two parking spaces proposed. So employees could, would typically walk or park there and walk to the facility by the sidewalk that is being proposed to the entrance door, the employee entrance door. Our traffic engineers did feel that some additional pavement markings in this general area near the entrance could be beneficial, so that could be a condition of approval. They did also feel that, given the size of the parking lot, traffic circulation would be clear, and they found that conflicts were unlikely. Relative to our zoning requirements for drive-through facilities specifically, this generally meets most of them. The one element that I just wanted to bring up was that the minimum lot depth for drive-through facilities is 200 feet. This particular development is oriented longways instead of along the depth of the property. The intent of this regulation is so that properties are deep enough to allow that orientation perpendicular to the street rather than parallel to the street. So the planning commission should consider whether this orientation is appropriate. I do understand, you know, based on the existing layout of the parking lot, why the applicant has proposed this. The parking lot is laid out in the same way, with the same orientation as the drive-through facility, but even so, that is something for the planning commission to consider. Relative to orientation of the drive, the actual stacking lanes, they are on the far side of the site, and they will be screened. There is landscaping proposed, and the order, the menu board and ordering, order board will be in this landscape area. We did discuss with the applicant about reorienting the trash enclosure. We'd prefer it actually not face the street, and we'd rather have the trash enclosure, you know, facing, you know, the back of the trash enclosure facing the street rather than the open side. And I do believe that there are some opportunities for that, so the planning commission might want to consider that reorientation. Relative to the building, the elevation at the lower left of the slide is what will be facing Plainfield. The window on the right is proposed to be spandrel glass, meaning it is not intended to be visible or, you know, transparent. It is intended to be glass that is opaque, so you can't see in. The reason for that is because of the restroom. However, and indeed, we really, we don't want people to be able to see into restrooms. However, given that this is a new building, there would be an opportunity to meet all our requirements with a building redesign or, you know, modification. So that would be an element that I would ask the planning commission to consider as well. All the other windows that are shown will be, will have visibility through them. The back of the building facing the plaza will have one window plus the pickup window. On the north side, there'll be one window, and on the south side is the entrance door, which is also glass. And other than the spandrel glass issue, the transparency will meet our requirements. The development will result in an increase of green space on the site because it's otherwise all pavement, so that will contribute to green space on the site, and tree canopy would be considered, calculated at the time of permitting if the planning commission is amenable to this development. The building is appropriately set back from the lot line. Lastly, would be neighborhood outreach. I don't believe that there was any information on neighborhood outreach that was brought to us. I will admit, there, this is probably one of the areas of the neighborhood where neighborhood outreach is probably less important than in others. So with that, I will just sum up by saying we're looking at whether a drive-through use is appropriate for this site, whether the use as proposed, that's purely drive-through without any kind of pedestrian facilities or public access, is appropriate, whether the proposed use meets the site plan review standards relative to orientation, and adequacy of the building transparency. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, should you have them.
All right, thanks, Elizabeth. Commissioners, any questions at this time?
I have one. And maybe this elevation shows it, but do you have a ground elevation that shows from Plainfield into the parking lot? And I'm asking that question to see what kind of landscaping is along the front of it.
Thank you. I'm sorry that I don't, but I could probably quickly pull something up. Oh, actually, on Google Street View, it doesn't, I don't think it adequate, I don't think it shows what's currently there. Within the last couple of years, the owner of the development has heavily landscaped the area in the front, and so it's actually off-site in the public right-of-way, but it does meet our parking lot screening requirements. So it is nicely landscaped in the area in front of the development. It might show it on...
Google Maps Street View does show it.
It does?
Yeah.
Okay, I can pull that up real quick.
I've been by it, but I haven't thought to evaluate it from that point of view.
Looks like there might be some additional plantings that are being proposed as part of this plan, so maybe the applicant can speak to whether or not MDOT has allowed, authorized that.
Thank you.
In regard to the trash enclosure, you mentioned that there might be some room to move it. Could you tell us what some of those options might be?
I think we were thinking about, it could be flipped, or it could go, just to, I don't, I'm not sure that this does it justice because it's off-season, but it's definitely a great improvement over what was there before, which was nothing, and that might have been done when the, some of these stores were rehabbed. To answer your question, the other location might be this corner here at the corner. There might be other options. We had just, you know, thought that it could be flipped, and the trash enclosure could be accessed when the facility isn't open, if it were accessed from the rear.
Thanks.
Any other questions at this time? All right, then if there's a applicant here that can come forward and share any other details you have, that'd be great.
I'm Josh Mannion, civil engineer with Progressive AE, and working on this project with Scooters Coffee. I don't know if any of you are familiar with Scooters Coffee, but...
Can you lift your microphone up?
Yes.
Sorry, thanks.
All right, is that better? Elizabeth mentioned it, but Scooters Coffee is drive-through only, and they typically operate 6:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. for the most part. Depends a little bit on what the businesses around there and customers are, but that's typically operationally what the hours are. And it's, their motto is basically, is essentially, "Great coffee and fast service for the service." So that's who they are in a very brief nutshell, and they serve coffee and prepackaged food like muffins, for example. So to the topic of the site layout, orientation, and dumpster that Elizabeth was discussing, it's laid out in this way for a few reasons, one of which is sensitivity towards the businesses that are already there. It allows the circulation and traffic flow and parking to those businesses to remain as they are right now without reorienting it and using up the parking spaces that those businesses would use. This part of the parking lot, if you ever drive by there, is very rarely used. It's a very underutilized part of the parking lot. So that's another benefit to having it oriented in this, located in this place. And traffic entering into the site, we've got the eight stacking spaces there for the drive-through, and the entrance point allows additional stacking if needed on either side of the entrance into the drive-through. Scooters has found nationally that aid is sort of the number of spaces that they typically will need, eight or nine right in there. And they've got upwards of, I believe it's a little over 300 nationwide right now. They're based out of Omaha, but looking to grow more in Michigan. So to the dumpster orientation question, we did examine a few different locations. The reason we settled on the location as shown right now is it's, first of all, it's close to the building entry for employees to take trash out. It also is sensitive towards businesses to the south. The landlord has preferred to have them not be facing with doors opening towards that business, and the location right where it is now, you know, doesn't face a business, realize it does face the street. It's oriented, so it's pretty much visible from just the southbound traffic that's on the opposite side of the road, and then thinking that it's, you know, there's no, it's MDOT right-of-way for the interchange on the opposite side of the street, so there's not a lot of, other than traffic that's crossing on the side of the road, there's not a lot of high visibility for it. And there is that landscaping that was recently installed, and if planning commission wants additional screening in there to help, I think we'd be open to that, additional screening in there. But that is, that's the preferred location, and sort of those are the reasons why. But we had examined some other locations in, between Scooters Coffee and the landlord. This is their preferred location, but certainly would be open to what the planning commission has to say on that. The other topic that Elizabeth mentioned was the spandrel glass for the restroom. My understanding in talking with the architect on that is that if that transparency is required there, I think they'd need to have some kind of interior window treatment. I'm not sure if there's much flexibility for location. If it has to move elsewhere along that building wall, it's going to likely be in front of equipment, so the transparency would be towards equipment inside the building, I believe, but that would probably show it here. Think that covers much of what I wanted to mention. Yeah, just reiterate the fact that it's, we are adding some landscaping. I think it's over 2,000 square feet, I don't remember the precise number, to what's just asphalt area right here that's not very utilized, so hopeful this be added benefit to the community and for Scooters as well.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Is this a franchise, then?
This one, Scooters offering franchises. I do not believe a franchisee has been assigned to this location yet.
Okay.
To my knowledge, they are all franchises.
So the, I had a question as to why you wouldn't add to the utilization of the site by including interior sit-down kind of service, but I hear you saying this is the model of the owner or of the tenant to use this site for just this drive-through model.
That is correct. That is, Scooters' business model is drive-through coffee service only.
Yeah, it would be nice, and it also seems that the, and I don't know if the property owners here, but the parking spaces adjacent to Plainfield are really superfluous in terms of usability. Will they remain as parking spaces?
The plan is to have those remain. I would anticipate the employees of Scooters Coffee, most times there's around four employees would use that, those spaces, but I'd have to defer to, I think, the landlord, and I don't believe they're here, for those, how often they are used. We are taking out, I believe it's 40, around 40 spaces for this, and then adding in back a couple, and we still have sufficient spaces looking at the shopping center as a whole.
So the relationship is between the shopping center owner and Scooters National, whatever?
Yes, yes. Scooters is going to be leasing this from the property owner here. So there's a lot of back and forth and coordination between Scooters and the landlord on the design of the site as well.
Okay.
My related question to that is how are other people using the shopping center to know that pedestrian... know that pedestrians are not welcome?
I believe it would be typically with a signage, "Drive-through only," if I remember. But that's a good question, because if you do have pedestrians that are entering the shopping center, walking around, I see your point, Paul. But I believe in the franchise, most of that's handled with a signage perspective.
Any other questions at this time? All right, thank you. Did you have something? Go ahead.
What is the width of the landscape bed that's on what's sort of the south side or the inside of the drive-through?
You're referring to the north side between the drive-through and like the dumpster area?
Nope, the other side.
The other side, between the parking lot?
Yes.
It's fairly narrow. I think it's approximately three feet, so enough to put, I believe it's either some perennials or ornamental grasses in there.
It looked like grasses, I just couldn't, it wasn't mentioned, and I was curious because that looks really tight.
I think it's ornamental grasses is what was able to be fit in there. I'd have to look at the plan to see what type they're specified there.
Okay. And it's sort of the same question on the northwest side of the building where the spandrel glass was that Elizabeth was mentioning. It looks like there's a couple of feet between the building and the curb. I'm just, I'm worried that there, that there's not going to be a lot of opportunity for the delineation using those plants, landscaping, even though it looks nice in plan view. Are there large enough spaces with enough soil volume to actually allow those plants to survive, so that there is that delineation in a fairly substantial-sized parking lot?
Yeah. I think it's similar along the front side. It's around three feet, so it's, and I've got the plans over there, I can see what materials are, but I believe it's ornamental grasses. And I, in coordination with our landscape architect, we want to make sure there's sufficient bed width for those to thrive.
Okay. And then my other question was, it looks like you're proposing some additional plantings inside the MDOT right-of-way, and I just wondered what the likelihood of MDOT agreeing to that, or does that just happen? What?
We have not submitted to MDOT yet for a permit, so we don't have their approval yet on that. This is our intention. There are, as you see, some other trees further to the northeast of those three that are planned in there. So we have to have that conversation, so it's obviously contingent on getting their approval.
It looks nice, and I like it. Don't get me wrong, I just, I want to be realistic with, is that actually feasible for us to do that? And if that's a consideration for the Planning Commission relative to mitigation or anything like that, especially when we're talking about the orientation being horizontal with the street, that the landscaping might not be feasible and thus not mitigate for that orientation.
I think if that, if MDOT is not open to that, and the Planning Commission wants to see those trees or landscaping along the frontage, I think we could look, to put it anywhere else, it would be, we'd have to remove parking spaces, clearly. I think the applicant would be open to investigating that if MDOT does not approve, but I haven't had that conversation specifically yet, so I don't want to commit to that, but I know that they're very much looking forward to coming here, and that's something that would, if it becomes, you know, a challenge, would be open to discussion on that.
Okay. And then my last thought was, you know, there's some nice enhanced pedestrian connectivity along Plainfield, including a bus stop, and it seems like a missed opportunity for us not to improve the connection into the site, especially if there's the opportunity for people that work at Scooters to take the bus to be able to get to their jobs versus take their vehicles. So for me, it feels like a bit of a missed opportunity to not at least have some connection or delineation of where pedestrians should be expected.
Yeah, we didn't just, we didn't have that incorporated because of the drive-through use that it is, but I'd have to look at the overall plan to see where the bus stop is and inside what it comes in. I believe further to the northeast, there may be an entrance that comes into the shopping center. We could look at one connection potentially here as well.
Be interested, not to put Commissioner Joseph on the spot, but, you know, there's a lot happening that you have to make a decision when you enter that access point, that what is sort of that northern access point, that you're making a decision to either make an immediate right so that you can get into the queue into the drive-through or continue on in the plaza. And so it seems like at least some striping or something so that there's the expectation or some sort of signal that there could be people crossing.
Yeah, and we're planning on adding more striping for vehicular access, wayfinding. It was part of the permitting process, but as of now, the pedestrian component wasn't planned on that, but we certainly would be open to considering it. And, sorry, I lost my train of thought where I was going to go with that.
Just that you're making really, it seems like you're coming in Plainfield quite quickly, and you're having to make a quick decision.
Oh, I recall, as I was going to say. If they do miss this initial turn, there's flexibility to circle past and one of the other, you know, drive lanes and come around from the other side, so using the shopping center parking drive aisles, because there is a cross-access, or I shouldn't say easement because it's all part of the lease agreement, the access.
Could you talk a little bit more about the transparency? Like, what is the difference between what you're, like, what you're asking for and what we're giving you? Like, what will, what will be, you know, factored into this decision-making, I feel like is pretty deficient? So could you just talk a little bit more about that?
I will do my best to explain that, as I'm a civil engineer, not an architect. But the requirement, as I understand, is 30% transparency along the street frontage, and we have two windows to accommodate that. One is fully transparent window, the other one at the bathroom is opaque, so you can't see through it. The reason for that is that's the restroom in there. So the request is, while we still have window, it's doesn't, it's not a fully transparent window. So that's the request, is to allow one that's not fully transparent for part of that requirement.
So we're forfeiting quite a bit of transparency in accommodating a bathroom in the design of this project from a franchise establishment? So this is their preferred footprint? It's not going to be deviated because, and to comply, basically, because of the preference of the builder?
The, actually, this is more windows than typically Scooters has to meet the city requirements, and I think the spandrel glass criteria not meeting was probably something the architect didn't realize that didn't meet the criteria. So they're open to different treatments. We just don't want to have a window that it opens up.
Yeah, I mean, you don't have to continue to reiterate, we won't want a bathroom window. I understand that, I think everybody understands that. I'm just more concerned about the lack of transparency in the total project.
If there's another location that we can put it in, we, there's an option for one, it just is not, it'd be looking towards equipment inside the, inside the building, so it's not, for the view-through, it would be the backside of some, some equipment. So the, I believe it's...
I mean, could, could the restroom not be put on the non-Plainfield side? Like, it's an equal, like, it's essentially taking up that court, the, I'm sorry, Carol, I don't have my directions right, but the top right corner of the floor plan there, could it not just be flipped over to the, the internal side?
I don't think so. Yeah, I thought of that too, but there's coolers along that western wall or left wall in the plan view, so I don't think it's a like-for-like flip, whether or not those coolers along that northeast wall facing Plainfield, I don't know if those are all lower cabinets, in which case you could have kind of two windows in either end of what appears to be the prep area. It's hard to know if those are uppers or lowers.
Yeah, I believe those are higher from, from hearing that from the architect in the past.
Any other questions at this point? All right, thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. If you're here today about this case on Plainfield, please come forward, state your name and share your thoughts. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, thoughts?
I'll just speak to the orientation question. I don't, I'm not as concerned deviating from the standard in terms of orientation because of the size and the, just the layout of this parking lot and this development generally. I still think there's plenty of appropriate parking, doesn't block the visibility, I think generally, of the rest of the development, so I'm not terribly concerned about the orientation being some sort of a barrier or problem, frankly. I appreciate Commissioner Wallace's perspective on, you know, can we find a solution around the transparency question? It is a really tiny box, though, so I also appreciate the applicant's, like, unless we put it on the roof, we probably don't have a lot of flexibility here, but would appreciate, you know, the applicant trying to get creative, and it sounds like they're willing to do that, hopefully, but would certainly defer to staff if there's recommendations on how to get the appropriate transparency.
Well, based on the fact that it is a tiny box, and that was something that I was thinking about when we talk about the orientation of the building, it is only 35 feet in length, if you will, whereas when I measured the McDonald's on Leonard, that's about 103 feet in length. So I think that that helps a little bit, but based on the floor plan, I'm not seeing any quick way that they could add a window in unless those cabinets in that prep area are all lowers. Ways that we've mitigated for lack of transparency before is either through some landscaping, so if there's ways to increase that landscape buffer, would be on the northwest side of the building or the street side of the building to support some trees, maybe. I suspect it's not big enough right now, which means we'd need to lose some parking along Plainfield as well to allow for that additional dimensional space for trees. We've also looked at art installations as ways to mitigate for a lack of transparency. I think that those might be more creative solutions that we've pushed for in the past than a spandrel piece of plastic.
I have always, yeah, I mean, in my 40-plus years here, I've never seen this parking lot full, so I'm appreciative that, that recognition of that underutilization is to add something that adds color and some landscaping and a service rather than just asphalt sitting there. On the other hand, I'm disappointed that it doesn't create a gathering place for the neighborhood or even the people getting off the bus or on the bus waiting for it to pick up a cup of coffee, read a newspaper, or chat. It would be interesting if the property owner were here to hear about what other alternatives there were. I think the franchise, this is their model, and, and you can't fault that they do their research and think this model's going to work in this site. So I don't see, I mean, opportunity to vote against it. I just think it's a missed opportunity if we could have had a higher usage of this property.
I think that's how I would put it as well, relative to our standards. Our neighborhood effect standard is, does the proposed use adversely affect the walkability of the neighborhood, impair pedestrian circulation patterns, or disrupt the continuity of the urban street wall? And it doesn't hinder other pedestrian use, so I like the way you put it, it's kind of a missed opportunity to enhance it, but at least it doesn't disrupt other.
Yeah, I think that's, that's a fair point. I, I actually think that this is an improvement on the parcel overall, because right now you drive by and it is a big open lot, and so I think by breaking this up and even kind of putting the used parking central in, inside of a development, I think makes more sense from an aesthetic perspective. So I think it's an improvement. I don't foresee many issues with this. I think in terms of the transparency, I know a lot of times, there's several reasons for I would be inclined to allow the spandrel glass for architectural reasons as opposed to trying to come up with some other architectural feature or screening, or just requiring them to use transparent glass and understand that they're going to put a blind or a curtain or something in there. So if we're doing this for safety reasons, it's, won't practically help anyways, but neither would an architectural feature. So I'd rather see the, the balance in the elevation with two windows versus not, I think.
Yeah, I think it's a little, I'm fine with the orientation the way it is. I think it makes sense based on the layout of the site. It does present some challenges in terms of prioritization for who gets to see what, right? Like, I, I looked up Scooters and one of their locations in Nebraska or something, and they have the, the queuing of the vehicles, like, basically parallel, right directly next to the traffic on the road, and so I appreciate that this is not that. And it also creates the situation where, when you're driving by, you're seeing like the back of the house operations in terms of the trash and the parking back there. So it is a balance, but I, I do appreciate that they made an attempt to put transparency and on the street side, so at least it isn't a blank building. I mean, that wouldn't be allowed, we wouldn't allow that, but it wouldn't meet the ordinance. But yeah, I think the, with the speed that happens at Plainfield there, the architectural, kind of the breaking up of that wall is what's most important about the transparency in this scenario, potentially, so I'm okay with that. I do, I heard that we have a lot of, in the small amount of landscaping, kind of width that they have, that there's a lot of ornamental grasses, and I would encourage them to make that more visually interesting for, to enhance the landscaping in that parking lot, but I, I agree that it's an improvement upon just asphalt.
When you say enhanced, do you mean add greater variety of plants?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd agree with that, and I think we also, I mean, this is, what, 35 or whatever, in the middle of a parking, I mean, the parking lot is enormous. If you've been by here, which I'm sure most of us do our due diligence and go to these sites, but, I mean, it seems to me if we're looking at three foot or five foot or six foot, I mean, that can be worked out with the lease, with the lease situation, I feel like, because that's, there's a great opportunity, but you're not going to fill this parking lot up with this coffee shop situation. I don't know if that's, I mean, if, the difference between three feet and five feet is something that the lease, leasur and, you know, less see have to work out, then I feel like that, I mean, that should be accommodated for the sake of not somebody else's business model, but yet for what we have and, you know, what we feel like needs to be, happen with the site. I mean, I, I don't know if this parking lot's ever been full.
Yeah, I guess I have a question for staff. So I get it, and overparking is certainly a problem here, but there are other obligations that this development might have around some of the uses that exist in those buildings right now. For example, like, I don't think there's a liquor license in there, but if you have a certain kind of liquor license, you have to have a certain number of parking spots. So, you know, we may be limiting other uses, and I don't know them, but we may be limiting other uses by expanding, you know, this space, for example, but, you know, I think they've obviously done a landscaping plan, they're looking at, you know, what's going to grow in those small sections. You know, I don't, I don't think perfect should be the enemy of the good here, so I mean, as long as it's meeting our standards, which I think the plan does meet the standard, the current green space standard. Question mark?
I don't know how to answer that, because there isn't like a requirement of the minimum width of the landscape bed must be five feet.
Right.
It's more, it kind of goes back to what's being planted, how much, and is there adequate soil volume? So that's the standard, is there adequate soil volume to support the plantings that are being done?
Right.
So without...
In my experience, grass grows anywhere. And it looks like they have, they have two big areas where they're proposing trees.
Yeah.
So I suspect that that's enough soil volume for the tree. So I suspect that that's enough soil volume for the trees, which would be the biggest concern.
Yeah.
Any other discussion? Or would someone be willing to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. Whereas Scooters Coffee has requested site plan review, special land use approval to construct a drive-through coffee kiosk within the parking lot of an existing shopping center at 3150 Plainfield Avenue Northeast, and whereas the proposed use is subject to the requirements for mixed-use commercial zone districts, Article 6, Drive-Thru Facility, Section 5.9.10, Standards for Site Plan Review, Section 5.12.08, and Special Land Uses, Section 5.12.09, and whereas the Planning Commission held a public hearing on February 10th, 2022, at which time all interested persons had an opportunity to be heard, and whereas the Planning Commission has considered the applicable owning ordinance standards, now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission approves the site plan review and special land use request of Scooters Coffee to construct a drive-through coffee kiosk within the parking lot of an existing shopping center at 3150 Plainfield Avenue Northeast for the following reasons. One, the planned, the proposed use will be consistent with the purpose and intent of the master plan and zoning ordinance, including the zone district, because the proposed use will reflect the purpose and intent of the MON-C Zone District to encourage a broad range of business, service, and commercial uses in appropriate locations. The development on an underutilized property will enhance the viability and encourage additional investment in the area. Two, the proposed use will meet the site plan review standards of Section 5.12.08.E. As a new development, the site has been designed to meet all standards and requirements with modifications permitted by the zoning ordinance. Three A, the proposed use will be compatible, harmonious, and appropriate with the character and uses of the neighborhood, adjacent properties, and the natural environment, because the use will support the desired mixed-use character of the neighborhood and adjacent properties. The proposed use will not have an adverse effect on the neighborhood, because, um, the intensity of the use and site orientation are appropriate to its surroundings, adequate vehicular stacking will be provided. Three C, the proposed use will be, will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to existing or future uses, or to the public welfare by reason of excessive traffic, smoke, orders, or odors, or noise, because the addition of a drive-through coffee ship, shop is not anticipated to significantly disturb surrounding tenant property or use. The proposed use would not adversely affect the walkability of the neighborhood, impair pedestrian circulation patterns, disrupt the continuity of the urban street wall, or otherwise hinder the creation of a pedestrian-oriented environment, because the proposed improvements do not exacerbate the existing conditions on the site, which are already auto-oriented in nature. Four, the proposed development will retain as many natural features of the landscape as practical, because additional landscaping and green space, including an island in the drive-through area, will be added. Five A, adequate public or private infrastructure services do already exist or will be provided at no additional cost. Five B, the proposed use would not be detrimental to the financial stability and economic welfare of the city, because the proposed improvements will encourage additional investment in the neighborhood. Be it, therefore, be it further resolved that the following conditions of approval shall apply to this project as are cited on the screen, the standard condition set A approvals, and two, that the parking lot be adequately marked to define vehicular, bicycle, and pedestrian circulation within and to and from the site.
Support.
Who is the support?
Wallace.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and support. Any discussion? All those in favor of the, oh, go ahead.
I, I heard earlier that there might be support to provide a greater variety of landscape materials slash plants. Is that a condition that could be added?
There is. I approve adding that condition.
Still support. Okay.
All right, anything? Go ahead.
Oops, I'm sorry. And then as a, um, a finding, I'm just wondering for three C, we talk about the additional drive-through is not anticipated to significantly disturb surrounding tenant use, property or use. And I'm wondering if we could add a statement based on the submitted trip generation data provided? I think a lot of times we look at the operator and that trip generation and...
I agree.
Okay, thank you. Still support?
Okay. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Thank you. Our next case is 32 and 34 Pleasant Street Southeast.
All these tall people. Okay, the next item on the agenda is a request from Wellhouse. They are requesting approval to construct a new four-unit apartment building to provide permanent housing for vulnerable populations. The subject property is located, located in the TN LDR Zone District, and multiple family developments require special land use approval in that district. As you can see on this map, the property is just a couple of properties away from the South Division Corridor. Can't really see it here, but on, uh, which is zoned TCC. So the subject site is located in close proximity to public transit along Division. And the subject site was generally addressed in the South Division Corridor Plan that was adopted in November of 2019. The property was included in that, that area addressed in the plan, because it was the South Division Corridor plus the areas adjacent to the corridor. And although there wasn't a specific recommendation provided for this property, there are a couple of recommendations in the plan that would apply, and most of those, um, recommendations and visions apply to development without displacement. I'll just mention that, um, a, a couple of them, to create stable and resilient neighborhoods, and also to create and maintain healthy, safe, and affordable housing for all income levels in the neighborhood. The plan also does recommend or want to see the redevelopment of vacant or underutilized properties by responsible developers who work holistically within the community. Additionally, in the 2002 master plan, there are great neighborhoods recommendations that are supported, that support this development to allow for a broad range of housing choices and a range of, a variety of housing, the number of housing and variety of housing units. And with that, I'll move on to the actual site. It's located at the southwest corner of Sheldon and Pleasant. It consists of two lots, and, um, I actually looked up the original plat, and this is how they were originally platted, which I just think is really strange because of that property, that jog in the property, but that's the way it was actually platted. It's two lots with a combined area of a little bit over 10,000 square feet. For the purposes of calculating density, this site could support up to eight dwelling units. Four units are proposed. The property was previously used by Wellhouse as a community garden, and as shown on this survey, there are a couple of accessory buildings that were used to support that use. It's otherwise vacant. It was a garden. Vacant of buildings, I should say, or permanent buildings. So the applicant is proposing four dwelling units in a single-story building. There'll be two two-bedroom units and two one-bedroom units. And as you can see on this slide, the, the units are fairly small. The one-bedrooms are proposed to be 484 square feet, and the two-bedrooms 553 square feet. The building is arranged, uh, there are two, it is arranged so that two dwelling units will be on each side of a central corridor. The building will have a gross floor area of about 2,400 square feet. Two surface parking spaces are proposed to be accessed from Sheldon, and the project is intended to provide housing for low-income families. I'll stay here. As the building is located, is the development site is on a corner, it is considered to have two front yards and two side yards. The two front yards are subject to the required building line, which is calculated based on the setbacks of existing buildings on surrounding properties. As proposed here, um, the building is appropriately cited relative to the RBL. The, the property, um, isn't, doesn't have a right angle at the corner, so it's cited as, as close as possible to that required building line. And we would consider that to be sufficient, given the site constraints. As you can see on the two sides, the building well exceeds the side yard setback. The, the side yard setback of a minimum of five feet and a combined setback of 20 feet. Green space is also well exceeded. Thirty percent is required. Plans indicate green space of about 64 square feet. Tree canopy, I don't know what that will be, but that will be calculated at LUD's permitting if the Planning Commission is amenable to approving this project. Relative to the building's location, given this, that this is a multiple-family development, it is to be located on a regional major or city collector street or within 200 feet of such a street. Neither Pleasant nor Sheldon meet that criteria. Division Avenue is the closest, um, uh, major, uh, city street, which is about 285 feet from the site. Jefferson is a little bit less than 500 feet from the site, which is a city collector street. The Planning Commission does have the ability to waive that, uh, criteria, and I would suggest that, particularly relative to the, the density here and the proximate, proximity of both Division and Jefferson, this would be appropriately located for a multiple-family development. Relative to parking, only two parking spaces are re, are proposed for this development. Typical, uh, multiple-family developments require one and a half parking spaces per dwelling unit, but affordable housing developments, um, do get a reduction of a half of a parking space. So, um, uh, four parking spaces would be required. Two are proposed. The Planning Commission does have the discretion to waive, um, the two deficient parking spaces. The applicant indicates, I think, seven parking spaces on the street adjacent to this property, and I'll defer to the applicant to talk about the need for their tenants, um, to have onsite parking or not. Onto building elevations. The building is to be clad in vinyl siding with the roof covered in asphalt shingles. The size and placement of the windows are generally, uh, uniform, and, um, the building does meet the transparency requirements. The main building entrance faces Pleasant to the north. We don't have a, um, a direct, um, head-on view, but this, um, center-right, elevation shows the main building entrance with an accessible, um, ramp. The, the door is recessed. Um, and it does create, you know, it highlights the building entrance. The applicant and staff had gone through a couple of, um, uh, design, slight design changes. I know originally the applicant had had some patios on those front elevations facing the street, and we definitely support outdoor access and, uh, from the dwelling units. Unfortunately, um, the zoning ordinance doesn't prohibit a deck or a patio on the front. In this zone district, you really have to have a, you know, some kind of covered, you know, a stoop or a porch. And we would really love to see the addition of some outdoor space here. We, um, I, I know that there are cost constraints, but we'd really love to see, um, the addition of porches on some of these units facing the street, and then even, you know, like a pat, just a surface patio on the interior elevations.
I think you mean on the interior yards.
What did I say? Elevations?
Elevations, interior yards.
Yeah, interior yards. Thank you for reading my mind, Krista. Interior yards.
Elizabeth, isn't it true that in the TN District, the primary entrance requires a stoop and a front porch?
A stoop or a porch. And I guess, I, I'm glad you brought that up. I, I think that might be a point of conversation. Um, this, I think this entrance technically meets that, but it would be up to the Planning Commission whether you find it appropriate. We'd rather see something a little bit more traditional, but it probably technically, technically meets that main entrance requirement for a stoop or a porch. The applicant did reach out to neighbors in anticipation of the Planning Commission meeting. There was a, a letter, um, distributed along with the elevation, building elevation plans distributed. Um, I don't believe I received, oh, just this morning, I received a letter of support from Grace Christian Reformed Church, and they support... And they support the development that is in your packet. And I can defer to the applicant to talk more about neighborhood engagement. So in sum, we're looking at a multiple-family development of four units in a TN LDR Zone District. You'll be looking at the consistency of the project with the South Division Corridor Plan and whether the, the project as proposed is consistent with the requirements of the TN Zone District as it pertains to expectations for character as well as whether it meets the neighborhood context as well. I would also add whether the development is appropriate relative to regional, whether the location is, of the development is appropriate relative to its proximity to a regional major city or city collector's street, and also whether the requested parking waiver is appropriate. Is there any questions that I can ask before I turn it over to the applicant?
All right, thanks, Elizabeth. Any questions? All right, thank you. I'll invite the applicant up then if there's other things you want to share with us.
I'll start. My name is Peter Scornia, Bizani Building Company. We're acting as the builder and design manager. We didn't do the design, but first I want to say I'm very proud to be part of the project because of the services that Wellhouse provides. The, the building will be a quality, sustainable building that, with finishes that would match other market rate units that, that we would provide. It will also meet the 2030 district standard. It will be an all-electric building built to be carbon-neutral for operations. A couple of clarifications from Elizabeth's introduction. It will not have vinyl siding. We would be doing steel or cement board siding. And as she said, we've had a, a number of design reviews that we've gone through as we balance overall cost with operational needs of Wellhouse.
Good afternoon. I'm John Glover, Director of Wellhouse. The only thing I would like to add is that in addition to adding more housing stock to the community, which of course this body understands is sorely needed, one of our goals is to encourage other developers to do this kind of housing for the population that we serve, to show that it can be done aesthetically, appropriately, meeting all the requirements, and affordably for, and I think if we, it, I'm sure that we're going to make this project a shining example that others can use as a model.
All right, thank you. Commissioners, any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I, I'm curious why you're limiting your request to four units and one story.
Well, there are several considerations in that. You know, we have a good relationship with many of our neighbors and the surrounding community. And we asked, well, we explored what size and what level the, the community would be most in favor of. And what came back to us was not, not a complex that would house 15 to 20 people and not one that would be two, three stories high. So it was in taking the community's input in mind that we designed this.
Okay, thank you.
I think Elizabeth mentioned that you were going to address the, the parking situation, if there's ample parking with only two spaces on the site.
You know, I, I'm just, just, I'm, off the top of my head, I would say about 80 to 85% of our tenants do not have vehicles. And many of them use public transportation and a lot of them use bicycles. And so the population that we want to design for doesn't really require that many parking spaces.
Is there bike parking on the site? I can't remember if that was part of the, are you providing bicycle parking?
We intend to provide bicycle storage inside of, of the structure.
You have a lot of space on what I think is the north side, if I'm looking at this design correctly. Is there any way to provide some kind of private, semi-private outdoor space for each of the four units? It just, whether that's a patio or something that provides that indoor-outdoor kind of experience for the homeowners or the occupants?
The short answer is yes, there is a way to do it. I'm not sure that we've figured out the right balance yet. Some of the earlier designs had a small little patio design to it, and it became cost prohibitive. And you'll recall what I said just a few seconds ago. We're trying to design a model that will encourage other developers to step into. And in order to do that, we, it needs to come in under a certain sort of price level. So there were several ideas that we banded around, but we're certainly open to considering.
And is there, there's no, you have to go through the hallway, it appears, to access the units. There's no direct access to the outside from the units?
There, there are several considerations around that as well. And one of the main ones, which may not be a technical reason, is that we want to encourage community. All of our other houses are designed to encourage community interaction. This particular unit, if we provided external access to all the units, would create more of a distance between the occupants. And we want to keep that kind of community building sense.
I had, had, wouldn't want to do without the interior access. I'm just thinking access to a yard or outside.
Any other questions or comments at this time? All right, I'll go ahead.
I had a question for you. I think, Peter, you had mentioned steel siding. I just, maybe it's more of a comment. I would just encourage you to watch the zoning ordinance requirements relative to metal siding, that it's fairly, to do it economically is going to be challenging with the residential requirements. So I would just encourage you to, to look at those, the, the building material requirements before you settle on the steel.
Yes.
Okay.
We have, and we will certainly double-check it.
Okay.
The product that we're proposing is Quality Edge, which is a, is a
Can you go to the microphone, please?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Yes, so we will certainly double-check that. We have reviewed it. It's a product that we have used in the past, manufactured by Quality Edge. I, I like it as opposed to vinyl, which is, from a sustainability standpoint, and has been durable and, but we'll, we'll certainly double-check that.
Okay, thank you. And so when you submit, if you do choose that route, just please provide the, the material details with your permits, because that will be really helpful for us to evaluate.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
All right, thank you. I'll open up the public hearing. If you're here today on this case, please come forward, state your name, and share your thoughts with us. I'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, any other questions or discussion on this case?
Just a few points. So this is my neighborhood. I welcome this development into it. And, you know, I think it's, when I look at the distinction in zoning around LDR versus MDR and Heritage Commons, which is a, you know, just two blocks from this, I know it's in a different zoning, different zone district, but I think that this, this use is going to be great. I'm with Commissioner Joseph. I'm like, more, can you make it bigger? But I get the math is sometimes complicated. I also think it's proximity to U Prep High School, to Division Avenue, to public transit, you know, to the new development that's going up just a couple of blocks north of here that we previously approved around ICCF. I just think this is a wonderful addition to our community, and I, I would fully support it.
Yeah, I, I completely agree that this use here is completely appropriate. I, I wish that it was more and that, like in, in going through the neighborhood, really the kind of the trend of development is two to two and a half stories. And so having this one-story building here with a lot of, lot left over is a, a little disappointing to me, but I, I am in complete support of the use in this, in this location. So I just, I just wish we had more of it to approve. And I think the, as Commissioner Beeler mentioned, the proximity to Division, I think it meets the spirit of that requirement to have multifamily by a main city street, so.
I, I agree with my colleagues, Commissioner Beeler and Joseph. The use is, I think, much needed in trying to get a variety of different uses, lower homelessness and, and address different types of housing needs. I too would have liked to have seen it two-story, given that most of the properties around there are, you know, old, two-story. But I understand the economics as well and know you'll pursue, or hope you'll pursue the highest you can get for the, being affordable and serving the needs of our community.
All right, any other thoughts or would someone be willing to make a motion?
I have a thought. I just want to, I'm, I'm fully in support as well. I just, it's not clear to me how the design actually meets 5.5.7E. So I know staff looks at these things and I just encourage them to confirm, because it doesn't seem to for me. With the orientation of entrances, primary entrance with multi, so I don't, we don't need to design now, but I just want to make sure that it actually complies with the ordinance.
Yeah, I guess I would trust that Elizabeth did the review for that. I, I think, in my opinion, it's probably meeting the bare minimum relative to the TN standards for the stoop. I don't think our ordinance does an adequate job specifying the requirements of stoops specifically. So when you look at the character up and down the block where you see stoops, having that cement slab in front is, I think, not keeping in character with the pattern of development or the architecture that we're seeing in the neighborhood. But technically, a stoop, because you only have to meet one, I think, one of the building element requirements relative to entrances, and a stoop is one of those requirements. I think in hindsight, we should have said stoop plus another requirement in order for that to happen. But it, it is meeting, I think, the minimum requirements of the ordinance. I, I too, while I appreciate the cost concerns, I'm not sure that a stoop in front of the building at this location is keeping in character with the architectural character of the, the surrounding neighborhood. If there could at least be some gable or roof that comes out over top, I think that that could go a long way. When you, I'm saying drive up and down when I'm Googling, driving up and down, I think that that would be far more consistent, although I do appreciate the cost considerations. I also think it's really important that when we have affordable housing developments, we hold those developments to the same standard and be very careful that we don't allow for affordable housing developments to be of lesser quality, because historically, community has reacted to that and they've reacted poorly. And suddenly, we associate affordable housing with poor design and a degradation of our character of our neighborhoods. And that's not the association we want at all. And I'm, I'm certain the applicant shares that with us, too. So making sure that we're very careful with that design, I, I think, is really critical. I'm not personally sure that this is meeting that standard, although I, I think it does meet the minimum standards of the ordinance. I don't know if that's helpful, but I, I share the concern and I, I would encourage us to maybe continue that conversation with the applicant to see if there's more elements we could add and still respect the financial limitations of the project.
Right, yeah, like direct access to outside was mentioned during the discussion, too, and I think that would be good. Sorry, did you, I thought you were pointing at somebody else. So yeah, I'm struggling with that, too, in terms of the design and making sure that this development is incorporated thoughtfully within the context of the neighborhood. And yeah, I want to see it go forward because I think that this use is really important and necessary. And I, the design is a struggle for me right now in terms of those elements. So I don't know.
I guess I'd, I'd look to Peter a little bit, side-eyeing him here, but maybe a condition of the approval is that revisions, I can better word this, wordsmith this, but that revisions to the architectural character of the building entrance be enhanced and that the applicant work with staff on that.
Is there an opportunity for discussion?
There can be. I mean, I'm comfortable with that, assuming that you're comfortable with working with staff after the fact.
Certainly on the front entrance. I think that makes a lot of sense. I think there's a great donor.
Can you go to the microphone again? Thanks.
Sorry, Peter, we, we can't pick up the audio for our minutes.
Sorry about that. Front entrance, to me, absolutely. I think there's lots of donor opportunities associated with the front. And, and personally, from a design standpoint, I think that could benefit from it. The individual entrances, I, and I don't want to speak for John, but operationally, I think that presents a different challenge. So to address the issue of the front entrance, I think absolutely we can, we can address that.
But, I mean, that's ultimately up to the commission. I would say it's not highly unusual to have a single entrance to serve multiple units within a building. And I think if, if the commission's okay, if we can see improved architectural enhancement of the entrances that are there, that I think will be more closely aligned with what we're seeing in the neighborhood.
I agree.
I agree.
I trust staff to work with them on that.
All right, I'm happy to make a motion if no one else has come.
All right, go ahead.
Can you wordsmith? I'll read more. Okay, here we go. Now therefore be it resolved that the planning commission approves the special land use request of Wellhouse John Glover to construct a multiple-family development of four dwelling units at 32 and 34 Pleasant Street Southeast for the following reasons. The proposed use will be consistent with the purpose and intent of the master plan and zoning ordinance, including the zone district, because providing an expanded range of housing opportunities is recommended by the master plan, and the development supports the recommendation of the South Division Corridor Plan for the redevelopment of vacant or underutilized property by responsible developers who work holistically with the community, and for the provision of new housing for low and very low-income individuals. The proposed use will meet the site plan review standards of Section 5.12.08.E. because as a new development, the site will be designed to conform with all requirements of the zoning ordinance. The proposed use will be compatible, harmonious, and appropriate with the character and uses of the neighborhood, adjacent properties, and the natural environment, because the valued characteristics of the TN neighborhood classification are reflective of this development. And the proposed use will support the desired future character of the neighborhood, oh, never mind. Oh, yeah, as demonstrated by neighbor support, or community support. The proposed use will not have adverse effects on the neighborhood because adequate onsite and street parking will be available. Residents of the development are not anticipated to own many personal vehicles and alternative transportation is available nearby, and building structures and entrances are appropriately oriented on the site. The proposed uses will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to existing or future uses or to the public welfare by reason of excessive traffic, noise, or visual clutter, because the intensity of the use is relatively low and appropriate to its surroundings. The proposed use would not adversely affect the walkability of the neighborhood, impair pedestrian circulation patterns, disrupt the continuity of the urban street wall, or otherwise hinder the creation of a pedestrian-oriented environment. Because the proposed development is appropriately sited at the required building line, the development will re-establish the street wall. The proposed development will retain as many natural features of the landscape as practicable because landscaping improvements and garden space will enhance current conditions on the site. Adequate public or private infrastructure and services already exist or will be provided at the developer's cost, and the proposed use would not be detrimental to the financial stability or economic welfare of the city, because additional dwelling units will contribute to the tax base and support nearby business districts, and the proposed development will encourage, may encourage additional investment in the neighborhood. Be it further resolved that the following conditions of approval shall apply to this project. Standard conditions at A approvals, which should be coming up on the screen here pretty soon. Very good. And?
For your consideration, that the applicant work with the planning director to enhance the Pleasant Street entrance with additional architectural elements to better reflect the architectural character of the residential structures within the near neighborhood.
Yes. That's it.
Support.
All right, we have a motion in support. Any final discussion? Wallace. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, the motion passes. Thank you.
Do you want to do that?
Let's take a three-minute break before our next case.
I remember you.
You were the only one left, right?
And tall Dutch guy.
Yeah, when you said there's a bunch of tall people, I figured it was only going to get worse.[641.66]
There are eight parking spaces on the property that you could see in the previous slide. Those are actually shared with 636 Wealthy abutting the property. So this, you can just see it on the edge of the slide here. So these two buildings share that parking lot and they're used by the other users. So the new use proposed here would not have access to those parking spaces. The applicant is not proposing any changes to the exterior of the building. And it's a typical storefront building and no changes would need to be made. It meets all the TN requirements. It's also in the Cherry Hill Historic District, but any new signage here is subject to review and approval by the Historic Preservation Commission. The tasting room is about 1,100 square feet in area. It will consist of a cocktail bar, seating, and an area for off-premise bottle and merchandise sales, which is, it will either be a shelving unit, it will either be a standalone shelving unit of four feet by seven feet, or shelving behind the bar. The tasting room will have an occupancy of about 36 to 48 people. They're not proposing any live entertainment or any outdoor seating. And there's no food service. Proposed hours of operation are Monday through Thursday, closing by 11:00 p.m., Friday and Saturday, closing at 2:00 a.m., and then Sunday, closing by 8:00 p.m. As you likely know, there are a number of other businesses within the vicinity that sell alcohol for both on- and off-site consumption. Relative to parking, the property has eight onsite spaces. And as I mentioned before, no parking will be available for patrons of this proposed establishment. Bars in this zone district would require one parking space per three occupants. With the proposed maximum occupancy, I don't think the occupancy has been definitively established, but it could be up to 48. And if it has an occupancy of 48, 16 parking spaces are required, parking waivers requested. And the deficient parking spaces can be addressed by the availability of public transportation and on-street parking. There are several, you know, there is on-street parking avail, well, I don't want to say it's available, but there is on-street parking in the zone district. And there's also several public parking lots as well. So using the reductions for public transit and for street parking and district parking, the parking requirement could be met. We have received several letters of support for this proposal, and I just, including from the Wealthy Street Business Alliance. And I received one letter of concern that the tasting room would affect other businesses. I received that letter this morning and include it in the packet. So in sum, we're looking at a tasting room associated with a distillery located off-site. And we should take into concern, into consideration any neighborhood concerns, the impact of this proposed use on neighbors, as well as the business district as a whole, appropriateness of the proposed hours of operation, which would be 2:00 a.m. on weekends, and the proposed parking waiver. Do you have any questions for me, or shall I turn it over to the applicant?
Any questions for Elizabeth? Okay, thank you. We'll invite the applicant up.
Does this thing have an extension? There we go. Hi, my name is Brandon Voorhees. I'm one of the managing members here at Eastern Kil. Thanks very much for your consideration. As Elizabeth mentioned, we are proposing a cocktail bar tasting room in the 1,100-square-foot MT unit at 634 Wealthy. We currently operate a distillery at 700 Ottawa here in Grand Rapids on the North Monroe District where we distill all of our spirits onsite. We have a tasting room that we've been operating there for six years. This is basically going to be a duplicate of that tasting room, just servicing another part of our great city. We love the Wealthy Street corridor. We believe that parking is not going to be a big factor because of how busy that corridor already is. And I'm not certain that we're going to drive more vehicular traffic there. I do believe we will just give them another option for experience to enjoy while they're already in that corridor. We're really hoping to service a lot of Paul Lee's restaurants before and after their dinner reservations, to be a happy hour spot, a late-night cocktail spot. We're really quiet when it comes to standard bars. It's a little bit more of a relaxed setting, which is why we're really okay with this smaller space. So, any questions I'd love to answer. Sorry, what the layout does not show is we will be adding a second bathroom as well. That space currently only has one. With working with the city engineers, they've requested that we put a second bathroom in. So we will be doing that.
No food, correct? It's just...
That is correct. Unfortunately, the space wasn't quite big enough, but Paul Lee has offered to potentially have some of his restaurants help us out.
Great, thanks.
Any other questions for applicant? Could you talk a little bit more about the hours? So whenever we're in a TBA zone district that abuts residential zone district, we pay a lot closer attention to the hours. So, and we also have to recognize that any approval we give for this kind of use would run with the land. And if you intend to be a low-impact user, we have to imagine that this could be a different operator. So can you just speak to why we should allow hours till 2:00 a.m. on the weekends in particular?
Yeah, sure. We're not 100% sure that we're going to utilize that right away. Demand is going to change hours a little bit as we get our legs under us and figure out what we really are servicing that neighborhood. One of the big thing is service industry folks. We have a lot of the service industry employees from those bars and restaurants around the area. We see a lot of them drive to our location on Ottawa after their shifts are done. Those restaurants generally close, I think, right now midnight. So we wanted to hopefully let them have a spot to unwind and relax for the next hour. I doubt we'll utilize two right away, but we wanted permission. Our current hours at Ottawa Avenue are to 1:00 a.m. on Friday and Saturday. And that's when we do get a lot of service industry members come and try to unwind after a busy shift that they just had. So that was our thought. There's a chance if the neighborhood, if our neighbors above us, if the neighborhood did not ask for that by way of coming and visiting us late hours, we might not utilize those. But we do think it could be definitely beneficial to the neighborhood if we were given that
Did you speak with the, can you talk about any engagement you did with the neighborhood or the residential?
Yeah, we've got a lot of friends in the neighborhood already. So we've chatted with Mokiah Chocolate. We've chatted with Paul Lee, who as you probably know is Donkey, and Winchester, and Royals. Amy Ruiz is a, right, sorry, is a friend out of the table. She's the one that ended up writing the letter of support with a few of her members in the association. We chat with Mitch at Speciation Ale is just a little bit east of us. So the neighborhood is in support. We also just had a meeting with Seeds of Promise yesterday, who is excited about us coming and looking for ways to partner there. So I think the neighborhood is welcoming of our arrival. Again, we've been friends with a lot of these folks for a number of years since we've been open in Ottawa already. So it's just kind of fun to join them in proximity now.
Thanks for that. Did you speak to, are there tenants living upstairs in the...
I spoke to the landlord about the tenants and he had a discussion with them.
Okay.
So I have not had a chance to meet the tenants yet. We have not started the build-out process. We're waiting for the proper approval. So I look forward to speaking with them. Again, we try to be the best neighbor that we can. Unfortunately, we're putting in sound dampening up on the ceiling. We are going to have a lot of attention to acoustics because of how small the space is, but we are not really a loud and rowdy bar anyway. We're more of a come and date night spot, listen to some music, some soft-playing music, and enjoy a cocktail.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you.
Question, but just a comment to you, Commissioner. I think also it's important that, you know, the scale of the facility and the seating area relative to the hours of operation, I think, is also something to consider, that it's not a 200-person facility. It's, what was it, 36 to 48 seats? So I think that helps kind of contextualize the space.
Yeah, if we have more than 10 or 12 people there after midnight, it'll be a pleasant surprise.
All right, thank you. We'll open up the public hearing. Anyone who'd like to...
Thank you.
...comment on this case? No? Close the public hearing. Any other comments or questions for the applicant? All right, discussion amongst the commission.
Yeah, I think the activity along Wealthy, I mean, the hours, you know, it's late, but I think the rest of the activity along this corridor, you know, sort of mitigates whatever other impact that may have caused on the residential. I live equal distance from the last applicant to this applicant, the other direction. And so I, you know, this is a walked corridor as much as it is a driven corridor, I think, for the neighborhood. So I'm not terribly concerned about parking either. I don't know, and I don't mean to, you know, jinx the applicant, but this space has gone, you know, used and unused probably six times, I feel like, in the last five years. So I hope this sticks, and I think it will, given the nature of the remainder of the uses along this particular part of Wealthy Street. So I'm supportive of the applicant and the application, including the hours and the waiver for parking.
Yeah, I agree. I, there's plenty of public parking around there, and I do appreciate how walkable this corridor is as well. And the transit stop is very nearby if folks want to get there via transit. I think that, so we did have a few letters, even though we didn't have anyone for the hearing. And the last one in terms, someone was concerned about taking business away. And I think that this is a unique enough use compared to the other uses in the area that I don't think it should, and that I think it will just enhance that business district. And I am appreciative that the applicant is going to be making sure to install a sound dampening so that the residential above is not impacted either, very limited impact. So I'm in support.
I just had a quick question about outdoor space use. So I know along this corridor, and Roaster will sometimes put out tables when the weather is applicable, small tables that get pulled in. Is there any request for outdoor use, or does that need to be included if the applicant assumes or expects to use any space along the sidewalk?
So we did not request at this time, but we did recently notice and remember that Roasters did put tables out. So if that seems like, if business is going well and that's something that we would like to do, we will come back and ask for permission to do so.
I think, Elizabeth, because it's an association with a bar, we would require Planning Commission approval, even if it's on the street, correct? Yeah, that was my memory too. So yeah, they would just need to come back.
I'm supportive of this project. This is an area we often visit, and I think there is plenty of parking in the community. And I too hope that you will have success in this space, because I love to see these storefronts full. So wish you luck on that. It's a good spot.
I just wanted to point out, I'm in full support of this. I like just what's happening here. I still live in this neighborhood. But I just wanted, for the record, to note that I think parking is an issue just in this general area. Like, you know, when I lived just around the block on 6B, just about a block away from this, there was always folks that would just park in front of our house or block our driveway in order to walk this. But it's not a one kind of, you know, this is your fault, Mr. Business Owner, it's just kind of, everybody's out having a good time. And then Wealthy Street, of course, as you know, quickly fills up. But yeah, overall, I just want to note that for the record, I think it is a problem. But overall, I think what's happening on Wealthy Street, it's well worth it in the community to have what's going on here. And, you know, we get to walk too. So if you live there, you know, you can just hopefully leave your car in your driveway and then be able to go out and have a good time with everybody else, so, yeah.
Could be, Lawrence, the time of day that I go down to Wealthy with two little kids.
Oh, yeah. Even sometimes when I go out at night, it could be, I don't know, 10, 11 o'clock at night, I almost feel like it's New York City out there. It's just folks are everywhere, and I'm like, this is not a time for a quiet night out. But it's worth it. I definitely don't hear a lot of complaints from my neighbors. Like, we love it, we enjoy it. I love the nightlife that goes on the Wealthy Street, and I think this adds a lot of value to that, so.
Well, with all that support, I'm happy to make a motion.
Can I just correct my statement? I'm sorry, I just don't want to mislead the Planning Commission. It could be done Director Review for the outdoor seating if the hours were limited. So I'm sorry. I don't know that that's materially their decision today. I just felt bad that I misspoke.
Well, thank you for that correction. Now therefore be it resolved that the Planning Commission approves the special land use and site plan review requests of Eastern Kil Distillery, Brandon Voorhees, to establish a distillery tasting room with alcohol sales for off-site consumption at 634 Wealthy Street Southeast for the following reasons. The proposed use will be consistent with the purpose and intent of the master plan and the zoning ordinance, including the zone district, because the proposed use will support the vitality of the local economy by encouraging investment, diversifying the economic base, and expanding employment opportunities, and provides a mix of uses in the commercial district. The proposed use will meet the site plan review standards of Section 5.12.08.E because the design of the existing building and site are consistent with the standards for the zone district. The proposed use will be compatible, harmonious, and appropriate with the character and uses of the neighborhood, adjacent properties, and the natural environment, because the proposed use will support the desired mixed-use character of the neighborhood. The use has support of the neighboring businesses and the business association as well. Potentially adverse effects arising from the proposed use will be minimized, like, easy for me to say. The orientation of the building entrance will be toward a wealthy street rather than adjacent to the residential district. The proposed use will be, will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to existing or future uses, or to the public welfare by reason of excessive traffic, smoke, odor, glare, or visual clutter, because no businesses will typically be open, the business will typically be open no later than midnight. I feel like that needs to be revised. Right, so do you have a proposed...
It's on the secondary conditions. If you read to the back, I think there's the times listed there.
So if I add this here...
Well, it's typical. It's only two days that it's after.
All right, we shall continue. The business will typically be open no later than midnight. No outdoor seating is proposed at this time. The proposed use will not adversely affect the walkability of the neighborhood, impair pedestrian circulation patterns, disrupt the continuity of the urban street wall, or otherwise hinder the creation of pedestrian-oriented environment, because no changes are proposed to the existing building, which is already located at the sidewalk. Adequate public or private infrastructure and services already, do already exist, and would not be provided, or would be provided with no additional cost, and will safeguard the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, because, did you get that? I'm really sorry, that was a lot. Okay. The site is currently improved with public infrastructure. Reliance on additional public services are not anticipated. The proposed use will not be detrimental to the financial stability or economic welfare of the city, because the use is not anticipated to result in nuances that require excessive code enforcement actions, given the proposed scale, hours, and location. Given the character, location, development trends, and other aspects of the neighborhood, it has demonstrated that the area is underserved by the proposed use, and that the proposed location for alcohol sales will debonantly be an asset to the neighborhood, because as proposed, the use will be unique to compare, as compared to existing uses in the neighborhood. The use or change in use as constructed and operated by the applicant is compatible with the neighborhood, because the scale of the operation will inherently limit the intensity and impact of the use. Adjacent or nearby parks, playgrounds, religious institutions, or schools will not be adversely affected, because the sale of packaged alcohol is anticipated to be purchased by patrons visiting the tasting room, and not generally by walk-in visitors. The use as proposed to be operated by the applicant will not have any negative secondary effects on the neighborhood, because the use will be small in scale. Be it further resolved that the following conditions of approval shall apply to this project, the standard set A approvals, which are shown on the screen. And then number two, the hours for packaging alcohol sales associated with the primary tasting room shall be consistent with the general operating hours of the business, being Monday through Thursday, 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m., Friday to Saturday, 1:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m., and Sunday, 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. And three, that the area of packaged alcohol displays shall be consistent with a submitted floor plan and testimony, specifically on a four-by-seven shelving unit behind the bar. Or behind the bar, excuse me. Support.
I think our findings under Neighborhood Effects III see that you were questioning the text maybe, our findings had more to do per Director Turkelson's comments, had to do with the fact that the limited number of seating would give us confidence that there would be minimal disturbance on the neighborhood, more so than the hours itself.
Great, I agree with that. I would still support that motion with the additional finding there.
All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Passes, thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good day.
And our last case of the day is 959 Cherry Street Southeast, Long Road Distillers.
I'd like to start out by saying, if you are amenable to approving this next one, please note that the resolutions are probably substantially the same. So if there's something that you might have stumbled over or didn't agree with, you might need to change it for this one as well. The next item on the agenda is, I have the wrong staff report. Is 959 Cherry, a request from Long Road Distillers to establish a tasting room and cocktail lounge associated with an off-site distilled spirits production facility. The sale of distilled spirits for off-site consumption and a waiver of the required number of parking spaces are also required. You might have heard many of these same things in that last one. It's very similar. There is no production associated with this location. Production is at an off-site facility. This is a satellite tasting room. This request does include outdoor seating, however, and a waiver of the required number of parking spaces is also requested. The proposed use is located in a TN TBA Zone District. It is in the Fairmount Square Historic District, so any exterior changes will need Historic Preservation Review and Approval. The building was, it is a through lot. It has frontage on both lake and cherry. Typically, the buildings on that block, back of house is the lake's lake frontage, and that's what is being proposed here. The entrance is proposed along Cherry, along with the outdoor seating in the space that you see that I'm pointing to. That space does have a, unless it's been modified already, but I, there is a dub-down and that space had been used for parking in the past, and that won't be the case anymore. The space was previously used for, by, Under the Vines, which was a specialty wine store. They did have some onsite tasting as well. The property is improved with a one-story building, and also on this property is Gemini Handmade, a retailer. The use will occupy the westerly portion of the site with frontage of approximately 31 feet along Cherry. There were approximately four onsite parking spaces on the portion of the site that is going to be leased, you know, both on the Cherry side and the Lakeside. As I mentioned, the Cherry spaces will be eliminated. Two parking spaces are proposed on the Lakeside, along with some additional improvements, a new walk-in cooler, some screening, and some screening. That will need Historic Preservation Review and Approval. And we will need some additional information to ensure that the proposed parking arrangement will actually work. We don't have a survey at this time, so we would need that to be able to confirm the dimensions and the location of the parking spaces relative to the right-of-way. So, you know, at the very most, two parking spaces would be provided. It's, you know, depending on what we find with a survey, you know, we'll have to further explore the feasibility of these parking spaces. So it could, you know, an additional parking space may need to be removed, is what I'm getting at. The former parking area on Cherry will be converted to an outdoor patio of approximately 555 square feet. A canopy is proposed. We don't have elevations of that, but you can see on the site plan, it does indicate that location of posts for a canopy. So an overhead structure will be proposed, or is proposed. And I don't recall if that has received Historic Preservation Review and Approval yet or not. According to the application, transparency will be increased on the Cherry Street facade relative to interior changes. The tasting room will be approximately 1,073 square feet, and will have indoor seating for about 49 patrons, with outdoor seating for approximately 40. The interior will also include an area for off-premise bottle and merchandise sales. The packaged alcohol will be displayed behind the bar. Requested hours of operation to provide flexibility in seasonal needs are Monday through Saturday until 1:00 a.m. and Sunday until 10:00. In all likelihood, hours of operation will actually be Monday through Saturday until midnight, rather than 1:00, and Sunday until 10:00 p.m. Outdoor seating is proposed Monday through Saturday until 11:00 and Sundays until 10:00. And the hours of operation are generally consistent of... And the hours of operation are generally consistent of outdoor, outdoor hours with other uses in the vicinity. There is a table in your staff report. Several other establishments in the vicinity operate until 11:00 p.m. daily outdoors, that would be Greenwell and the Brewery Vivant. Maru Sushi has approval until 9:30. Grove has approval until 2:00 a.m. on the weekends. I don't know if they ever stayed open that late or not. And those hours were approved quite a long ago, quite a few years ago, with their predecessor Relative to parking, a total of 27 parking spaces are required for this use. The indoor use would require 17 parking spaces, and the outdoor, an additional 10. So, a waiver of 25 or 26 parking spaces is requested. The deficient spaces can be addressed by public transit and on-street parking. There are no public lots in this area, but there is surface parking, or street parking, I should say. Relative to public input, the applicant did quite a bit of neighborhood outreach, as was outlined in the staff report and in the applicant's application. We have received several letters of support for the proposed use, including from Grand Rapids Public Schools, and the East Hills Business Association, as well as a letter with signatures of support from multiple surrounding businesses. So, in sum, we're looking at the addition of a, a tasting room with outdoor seating and packaged alcohol sales, and a parking waiver. And I'll be happy to answer any questions, or turn it over to the applicant.
Any questions for Elizabeth? All right, thank you. Invite the applicant up. State your name for the record, please.
Good afternoon, my name is Kyle Van Streen. I'm the co-owner of Long Road Distillers, the applicant for this project. Yeah, we're excited about the opportunity before us in the East Hills neighborhood. We've had our eye on this even before we opened our first location on the west side, knowing that this was a vibrant, walkable community, understanding that we didn't have that fully on the west side at the time of opening, but still committed to our neighborhood where our roots were. So, we're excited to bring this proposal forth. In terms of licensing, this is an off-premise tasting room for the distillery. It will act just like a cocktail bar, with, with the sale of packaged alcohol for off-premise consumption as well. To help avoid some confusion, this will be known as less traveled by Long Road Distillers, so trying to differentiate between our two locations in town here. And the, the feel will be different. Our menus will be different. This will be a smaller, more curated selection of cocktails, whereas on the west side, our location tries to provide the complete experience from distillery tour, seeing the grain processed, to production, to dinner and a cocktail up front in the bar and restaurant. So, no plans for a kitchen here. We do hope to offer some, from, some snacks that will be prepared off-site and brought here. So, we will have some light food, but no, no space for a kitchen, as you can see, the footprint's very small. To talk about the patio, Elizabeth did a great job of presenting this. The patio does have a metal pergola, big steel beams, that was approved by the Historic Preservation Commission, both the patio structure, as well as the improvements on the Cherry Street facade. So, huge improvement, removing some strange faux roofs from the front of the building, revealing the tile that was underneath. We have hopes to do a similar improvement on the Lake Drive side, but we're seeking some grant funding to help with, with the cost of that. And as she mentioned, we will be going to the Historic Preservation Commission during their March meeting for approval for our walk-in and the enclosure for the walk-in, and our recycling bins, and refuse carts. Happy to answer any questions.
What about the pole sign?
The pole sign is actually of no interest to me whatsoever.
It's not on your property?
Well, it's on the parcel, but since we share the parcel with Gemini Handmade, I understand that they have some interest in using that sign. I actually don't, because we don't, we want to encourage people to use the Cherry entrance. That will be our primary entrance, and so we won't have signage on, on Lake Drive side.
Okay, thank you.
We're normally concerned about hours of operation in TBA's relative to residential nearby. In this case, there's not a lot of residential very nearby, but can you just speak to the, why you're requesting the hours that you are?
Yeah, we're, as I, as is the, mentioned in the staff report, we're asking for a little bit more than we think we'll use, and that's to allow for some flexibility. I do think that this location will probably stay busier a little bit later than our other location, given the proximity to neighborhood, and folks that will probably come here. But we try to be consistent with the neighboring businesses and other uses around. Yeah.
Can you speak a little bit more to the canopy that you're going to put out?
Yeah, it's, it won't, we won't actually have a roof. It's very large steel beams running north and south, and there will be additional steel beams placed on top of that to, creates a kind of a crosshatch over top of that to add some architectural interest, as well as some shade. But I suspect that the, the building, two doors down, with the three stories, will provide some nice shade in the evening, so we're not all that concerned about it.
Are there other uses along the street that have similar canopies?
I'm not sure. I believe that Maru has some structure attached to their building. I know that Greenwell has a semi-permanent structure as well. Theirs are both enclosed. We don't intend to close ours in. It will be open-air.
Any more questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. We'll open up the public hearing. If anyone would like to comment on this case, now is your chance. And we'll close the public hearing, and open it up to commission discussion.
Yeah, I think the use here is appropriate. I'm glad to hear that the curb cutter, in walking by it yesterday, see that the curb cutter is already closed, to provide a couple more spaces on the street. And I think the utilization of that space for an outdoor patio is appropriate, given that, like how far back the building is set compared to all the other buildings along that stretch. And I'm disappointed that the sign isn't going away, but I understand that it's not really within the applicant's ability to take it down at this point.
We also typically look to remove signs where there's a more significant redevelopment project, rather than just, not just, rather than reuse of the property.
Sure, fair.
I too appreciate utilizing what was really undefined parking in that front space, and thought it could be more pedestrian-friendly, and what you see happening down at Brewery Vivant, and know what they've done, I think this is just going to further complement the development of the area, and pedestrian access and outdoor access, which we all are enjoying.
I also appreciate the applicant's intention on improvement along Lake Drive. I mean, I think that sometimes that gets forgotten, but yet it's still sort of a front-facing space, and I think there's real opportunity for continued improvement there, so appreciate that. And I, I think the unique outdoor space here is perfect for this property, given it's, just the nature and the, and the positioning of the, the building, I think it's going to be, it will not be impactful to pedestrian traffic along Cherry there, but complimentary to it, so I think that the, the use is great.
I appreciate the applicant's outreach to the neighboring businesses and, and neighborhood there, and I also think it will be interesting, as you described, the architectural elements of that sort of open space. I think that just sort of like welcomes you into that neighborhood also, and creates some interest, so thank you for that.
I'm happy to make a motion if, unless somebody else wants to.
I just wanted, wanted to ask if there is ability to do improvements on Lake Drive, will you eventually put an entrance there?
There is a door there now. We just won't advertise that it's a door. It will be open. When we're open, people can enter through that door, so it won't be locked. But in terms of the flow of service, it doesn't, it's really hard to have two doors. People get confused when they, when they do, when they walk in on the, the wrong side. So, you know, we wouldn't, we wouldn't try to highlight that that was an entrance for, for pedestrians. And to speak to the improvements on the Lake Drive side, unlike on the Cherry side, where our, our neighbors at Gemini have a very different architectural feel, on the backside, it's just one big, long elevation, and so working with them to come up with an appropriate renovation is, is what we're doing.
Thank you.
You could call it the door less used.
Good.
Wow. I can tell we've been sitting here a while.
I just want to make one more comment about parking for the record. Not unlike our last applicant, you know, this is a district that I think has seen increased use, and there's probably impact on the neighborhood for parking, but I think, again, this is a very walkable neighborhood as well, and so I think similar conditions exist to accept the waiver requested for the parking.
All right, shall I? Now therefore be it resolved that the planning commission approves the special land use and site plan review request of Long Road Distillers Kyle Van Streen to establish a distillery tasting room with outdoor service and alcohol sales for off-site consumption at 959 Cherry Street Southeast for the following reasons. The proposed use will be consistent with the purpose and intent of the master plan and zoning ordinance, including the zone district, because the proposed use will support the vitality of the local economy by encouraging investment, diversifying the economic base, and expanding employment opportunities, and provide a mix of uses in a commercial area. The proposed use will meet the site plan review standards of section 5.12.08.E., because the outdoor seating is proposed to be situated to not interfere with efficient pedestrian circulation, and the design of the existing building is generally consistent with the standards for the zone district. The proposed use will be compatible, harmonious, and appropriate with the character and uses of the neighborhood, adjacent properties, and natural environment, because the proposed use will support the desired mixed-use character of the neighborhood, and the use has the support of neighboring businesses and the business association. Potentially adverse effects arising from the proposed use will be minimized, because given the orientation of the outdoor seating and the surrounding street network, associated impacts are anticipated to be minimal. The proposed use will not be detrimental, hazardous, or disturbing to existing or future uses, or to the public welfare by reason of excessive traffic, smoke, odors, glare, or visual clutter, because no, no food preparation is proposed, mitigating smoke and odors from the site, and seating is relatively limited and isn't anticipated to generate excessive traffic. The proposed use will not adversely affect the walkability of the neighborhood, impair pedestrian circulation patterns, disrupt the continuity of the urban street wall, or otherwise hinder the creation of a pedestrian-oriented environment, because the use and the outdoor seating located near the street front will contribute to the walkability of the business district. Adequate public or private infrastructure and services already exist or would be provided at no additional cost, and will safeguard the health, safety, and general welfare of the public, because the site is currently improved with public infrastructure, and reliance on additional public services is not anticipated. The proposed use will not be detrimental to the financial stability or economic welfare of the city, because the use is not anticipated to result in nuisances that require excessive code enforcement actions, given the proposed scale, hours, and location. Given the character, location, development trends, another, I hate this one. No, I'm not going to do that one. All right. The use or change in use as constructed and operated by the applicant is compatible with the neighborhood, because the proposed hours of operation are consistent with other establishments in the vicinity. Adjacent or nearby parks, playgrounds, and religious institutions or schools will not be adversely affected, because the sale of packaged alcohol is anticipated to be purchased by patrons visiting the tasting room, and not generally by walk-in visitors. The use as proposed to be operated by the applicant will not have any or minimal negative secondary effects on the neighborhood, because the use will be relatively small in scale and the hours will be limited. Be it further resolved that the following conditions of approval shall apply to this project. Standard conditions set A approvals, as shown on the screen. Two, that the hours for packaged alcohol sales associated with the primary tasting room shall be consistent with the general operating hours of the business, being Monday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. the following day, and Sunday, 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Three, that the area of packaged alcohol displays shall be consistent with the submitted floor plan and testimony, specifically shelving located behind the bar, and for the outdoor hours of operation should be limited to 3:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. Monday through Saturday, and noon to 10:00 p.m. on Sunday.
Motion in support. Any further discussion?
I just have a comment for E4 about the impact to parks, playgrounds, institutions. You may also want to note in your findings that GRPS actually submitted a letter in support of the application.
Yeah, that would be great to add that.
Support.
Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. Passes, thank you. Any further planning, commission, discussion? And we'll have our traditional public comment period. Seeing no public comment, close that public comment period. And we're adjourned. Thank you.